Good afternoon and welcome to the special meeting of the Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission on Wednesday, January 23 at 2:30 in the afternoon. May we have roll call please?
Commissioners Scarpetian?
Here.
Khan?
Here.
Rothfogel?
Here.
Sharkey?
Here.
President Patrick?
Here.
Agenda for the January 23, 2013 meeting was posted on the bulletin board outside City Hall on Thursday, January 17, 2013. Item 2, upcoming council agenda items.
As President Patrick, members of the Commission, we have scheduled for January 29 a resolution of appropriation and authorization to bid for a new roof at the Civic Auditorium, which is estimated to be about a $360,000 project, and we are proposing to use our enterprise fund balance to pay for that new roof at the Civic. On February 5, we have scheduled a motion authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement for design services for the Palmer Park site improvement project. We also have a resolution of appropriation that transfers CDBG funds from the Home and Emergency Safety and Security project to the Home and Emergency Youth Activities Corner project as recommended by the CDBG Advisory Committee. We also have a report on the bid results for the Catalina Adobe restroom improvement project, and we also have a report on bid results for the Maryland Avenue Park, which we will be presenting to the city council. And then for the city council meeting on February 12, we have a resolution of appropriation to appropriate additional CDBG funds for the Essentia Rehabilitation Project. That's a project to rehabilitate a homeless access center and emergency shelter. We also have on February 12, a report to provide direction to staff regarding the 2014 Rose Float. For example, direction regarding fundraising strategy, selection of riders, and the size of the budget that the council would like to target. Also on February 12, we have scheduled a resolution of appropriation to transfer CDBG funds from the Glendale Adventist Medical Center ADA Restroom Project to the Glendale Adventist Medical Center HVAC project as recommended by the CDBG Advisory Committee. And that's all we have scheduled for the next month or so.
Okay, thank you very much. What is next?
Next is item 3, Commission staff comments.
Commissioners, any comments? Commissioner Sharkey?
All right. Glendale Parks and Open Space Foundation got three exciting events coming up. First, our website just went up for our 10K Verdugo Mountains 10K and Trail Run, and it's runtheverdugos.com. So it just went up last week, and we expect about 700 participants, and it's just a fun day to come out anyway. And that is on May 5, Cinco de Mayo. The next thing we have is, we don't have a website up yet, but Dodger Night, and so save that date, May 10, and it's Glendale Dodger Night. And we're going to have probably, hopefully, a group going, and last year we did really well. We had almost 500 people, so sold tickets. So that's coming up, and these are all to benefit parks and open space. And on July 25, we have a golf tournament, which is pretty exciting also. We don't have a website up yet, but stay tuned. Thank you.
Okay.
The golf tournament, is that the city championship that we did last year?
Yes, it is. And it'll be, the qualifying will be at Shoal Canyon, and for the people who do well, and you go to Oakmont Country Club and play golf there, and I understand that's quite the place to play golf.
When does the website come up?
That I don't know. I'll work on that for you. Do you play golf?
Not well.
Oh, okay.
You don't have to play golf well to enter.
Are you a Dodger fan?
I'm a Dodger fan.
Okay. We have something for everyone. Right?
We do.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Duran?
President Patrick, members of the Commission, if I may, we do have a special treat this afternoon. Amongst one of our responsibilities related to the Rose Float is to bring the Rose Float back, to return the Rose Float to the city of Glendale, and to park in front of the Alex Theater for the viewing and enjoyment of the residents of Glendale. And that is no easy task. So what we decided to do this year, we decided to document through a time-lapse video of what it takes for our staff to, and the police department. We do have a six- or 12-motor escort coming from Pasadena all the way to Glendale to deal with the traffic and being able to bring the wide load through the streets into Glendale. So I'm going to hand it over to Coco from here, and he will show us his production.
Thank you, Mr. Duran. President Patrick, members of the Commission, as Mr. Duran suggested, I give full credit to one of our staff who helped us out with the transition of bringing the float back. Our weekend supervisor, Armin Tagakchian, he said we should videotape it for archives, and once he had the videotape and he condensed it, we discussed it with Mr. Duran and said this would be perfect to show the Commission and the public what we have to go through to bring the float back. We get questions all the time. It's difficult to explain, so we figured why not just simply show it in a brief video? It is a five-and-a-half-minute video condensed from a three-hour operation. We give full credit also to the Glendale PD with their escorts. We doubt them. I don't think we can get the float here in one piece. And Mr. Sean Toro was volunteered the last three years to be our blind driver. You will see, we have figured out a way to address his blind driving. We have, we work with GTV Six. They help us out with the camera and a little monitor inside for him, so while he's driving and I'm directing him in terms of the turns, he could see better the tow truck, the tow bar, so we can maintain it and bring it safely to Glendale. Luckily, we've been successful the last few years, knock on wood, no incidences, and so without further ado, I'll ask Iris to play the video for us. So Sean, you got the camera?
Got the camera. Put the camera on the front. We'll run the wires back to the cab behind the screen mounted in there. All I need your help with is making sure it lines up with the tow hitch, the bar, and the tow truck.
Should be fine. I hope they get you something on the seat to sit on.
Should be smooth, about two and a half hours.
You can do better than that, I'm sure.
With the saw, and add the saw.
Sean, how you doing there?
That was more fun than the parade.
As you can see, some of the areas to maneuver is quite challenging. The typical route we take is Washington Boulevard to Fair Oaks, south on Fair Oaks, make a right on Orange Grove, and then when we hit the Colorado Bridge, as you noticed, we actually had to stop the freeway traffic exit and take that, the wrong way turn to actually enter onto the bridge. And yet, at the same time, the width of the entrance is just almost perfect width for the float. Poses some challenges at times, and we did make it safe and sound with all that. As you noted, there were some vehicles that were parked in the no-parking zone, and credit to Glendale PD, they actually walked up and down the boulevard, tried to go into the restaurants and all the shops to ask if anybody had parked, gave an opportunity to come and move the vehicles. Out of the four, two were moved away before the tow trucks came in, and, well, with the other two unfortunately had to be towed away. We do give credit also for the tow company, Gay's Towing. They have done this successfully for us the past few years. The one stop you saw we made at Glendale Adventist, it's along our route, and since they're one of our donors, they requested if they could stop and take pictures. We did about a five-minute stop there with the opportunity for photos. They appreciated that. Their staff was really exciting. And in short, this is what it takes to bring the float back to Glendale.
You also went by the Americana, another sponsor.
Yes, correct. Americana, as you can note, as we're turning, it's, once you turn on Brand Boulevard, it's probably the most beautiful drive through the whole route that we have.
Very well done.
Now, what time of night was that?
We typically start our operations, start here 5 o'clock. By 6 o'clock, we're ready and ready to leave the Pasadena route. It's a matter of where we have us parked and the float's in front of us to move and make room to maneuver to get out of there.
I thought this year I saw that it was Monterey tow, not Gay.
I do stand corrected. It was Monterey tow. Monterey tow. I do stand corrected, yes.
No, no, I just wanted to make sure they got credit for the.
You're right, you're right. And I had asked Armin to list himself and Aram Makarian, who was also one of our staff down at the yard, who went through the whole process with us, and it is Monterey tow. Stand corrected. But yes.
Well, thank you very much. That was quite fun.
Great.
And I might add that the float did get a governor's trophy.
Absolutely.
So I was very proud of Glendale. It's one of my favorite floats.
Yeah.
Congratulations to all.
Thank you.
Great music, too, whoever picked the music.
No, we were debating going with Yanni, and then we figured, no, not Yanni this time around, and let Armin pick the music.
You didn't consult Gary?
No. Sorry, Gary.
Well, it was a spectacular float, and I know a lot of work putting it together and clearly a lot of work getting it back here, so thank you for sharing that with us. Okay, what is next?
Next, we have oral communications. That's item 4. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. The Commission may question the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The Director may refer the matter to the proper section for investigation and report.
Okay, I have one card. Ciara, oh, I was saying this right beforehand. Would you just say your name for us, please?
My name's Ciara Liberidian.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you so much. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, President Patrick and members of the Commission, viewers and city staff. My name is Ciara Liberidian. I'm a member of the Armenian Relief Society, Western Region, whose headquarters is here in Glendale. I'm here to invite you all to the Second Annual Three-Day Winter Wonderland Festival. Last year, we brought real snow to the children of Glendale, and this year, we're bringing twice the amount of snow so that parents can enjoy the rides with their children. The proceeds from our fundraising help countries with major emergencies as well as running Saturday schools here in California. We also have offices for social services in Glendale, Pasadena, Burbank, and Hollywood. And here's a small clip of last year's festival. Come and enjoy the ARS Winter Wonderland Three-Day Festival. It'll take place Friday, January 25 through Sunday, January 27, on the grounds of St. Mary's Church at 500 North Central Avenue in Glendale. A chance to play in real snow and rides and games for all ages, great food and entertainment. Admission is $3. For more details, call 818-500-1343. Come and have a great time. See you there. So the video mentioned, the dates are Friday, January 25, this Friday, through January 27, Sunday. And the times are Friday from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m., Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and Sunday from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. And for parking, we will have valet parking, and parking is also available with some of our neighboring businesses.
What's the address again?
Oh.
Of St. Mary's?
It's at the St. Mary's Church, but I don't know the exact.
I think it's 500 South Central Avenue.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not north, it's south.
And is there a special time for the snow part?
It's going to be there the whole time.
Wow, I hope it's a nice cold weekend.
I hope it's a nice cold, dry weekend.
Yes, dry weekend. Okay, thank you so much for coming and sharing that with us.
Thank you.
Okay, and what is next?
Next, we have item 5, consent items. A, approval of the minutes of the Commission regular meeting held on December 17, 2012.
I'll move the minutes of the Commission regular meeting on December 17, 2012.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioners Scarpetian?
Yes.
Khan?
Yes.
Rothfogel?
Yes.
Sharkey?
Standing.
President Patrick?
Yes.
Item 6, business agenda. A, action items. At 1, resolution establishing administrative fees for changes to approved facility permits at community centers and the Glendale Sports Complex.
Good afternoon. I'm Gabrielle Golia, Community Services Supervisor at the Glendale Sports Complex. I am here today recommending that the Commission approve a resolution establishing administrative fees for changes to approved facility permits at community centers and the sports complex. These are not fees that would be assessed for every single person that reserves a field or a room at the complex or at one of our centers. They are simply change fees for customers who have already gone through the entire permitting process, paid for their permit, they have an approved permit in their hand, and then they call us later to make changes to it. At the Glendale Sports Complex, we will take permits for up to three months at a time, and many times, customers will reserve out three full months in advance and then make numerous changes to these permits after having already paid for them. We have one customer that's made up to 27 changes to one permit.
Right.
That is a lot of staff time to go ahead and make those changes, and it takes quite a bit of effort, sometimes even up to two staff, to go through the permit, identify the charges, refund the correct charges, recharge the correct charges, and change the permitted time. There is currently an approved cancellation fee associated with all permits. These allow the city to charge between $15 and 50% of the permit amount based on when the permit is canceled, but we don't have a fee just to change the permit. This new fee would, like I said, come into effect once a permit has been issued and the customer wants to change it, but we want to retain that customer. So we don't want to charge the full cancellation fee and potentially lose this customer and charge them up to $100, $200, $300. We just want to charge a nominal fee in order to cover the staff charges or the staff time that it takes to actually make that change. The proposed change fees are $10 per request for a small permit under $100, and $20 per request for permits totaling more than $200. The reason for the difference is that the smaller permits under $100 could be as low as a $20 permit. That would be the minimum amount someone would pay to reserve a room. We don't want to be charging more than 50% of that. At that point in time, we're already reaching our cancellation fee, so we wanted to have a small fee for that. The larger permits over $200 do tend to be sports permits and large civic auditorium-type permits, large community center permits that extend over large amounts of time and include multiple different fees, so the staff time to make those changes is a little bit more intense, thus the higher rate of $20. We are not looking to actually generate revenue from this. We're really hoping it will be an incentive for the customer to review their permit and make sure that they have identified everything that they need before they sign off the final disclaimer. And any fees assessed really are just to cover the staff costs. Can I answer any questions about this?
Are there any questions? Commissioner Khan?
A few questions for you.
Sure.
First of all, in terms of the over $100, you said that there could be multiple permits that they've applied for.
Multiple dates on one permit, yes.
Okay. So it's one single permit at all these times, and then if they changed it, they could be changing it on multiple dates?
Yes, what we're proposing is that it's per request, so one request could include changing every Monday to a Tuesday. So it wouldn't be per date that we change, but more per request that comes into us, because every request that comes in, the staff has to sit down, go through their entire permit, and make the changes at once. So it's not necessarily a per-date change, but just per single request.
So the person requesting 27 changes wouldn't be charged necessarily for each of those changes, but if they requested all 27 at one time, they would only be charged once?
Right, correct. We also propose to, what will obviously inform all of the customers of this fee, it will be listed in the disclaimer, so when they are receiving their permit and reading the disclaimer, they can see that these fees will be assessed with changes, and it gives them a chance to review all of the dates on their permit, make sure that everything is correct, make any changes that they want to at that time, then sign their disclaimer and make payment, and that will be a finalized approved permit. So we give them ample time to make changes. This is also a fee that with approval from the supervisor could be waived. If there were an incident, a child broke his arm, a birthday party had to be canceled because someone was sick, we would obviously be waiving those fees. We wouldn't be charging them for every one of these. These are more for the customers that are reserving long periods of time, making multiple changes on a weekly basis.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Scarpetian?
Two questions. That 27 times, what kind of a permit was it?
That was a sports field permit.
Sports field permit.
Yes.
And was for the entire season, because?
It was a three-month permit.
Okay.
This particular customer that I brought up in the report basically reserved a lot of time, a whole bulk amount of time, in order to have control over it.
Right.
And then would call us and change it and release time back and say, oh, I talked to a coach, and they now want to go at 4 o'clock instead of 2 o'clock, and I need to change this field. It was a very, very time-intensive permit.
Okay. And that 50% cancellation fee, when does it apply? How long time do they have to cancel the permit?
If a customer cancels more than two weeks out, it's just a $15 administrative fee, and they receive the rest back. If they cancel within the two-week period, then it's 50% or $25, whichever is greater.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Rothfogel?
If I wanted to, if I had a soccer team or a league, and I was coming in and reserving, you know, for three months every, you know, twice a week or whatever, approximately how much would that fee cost us?
It would depend on the facility. At the Glendale Sports Complex, for instance, daytime reservation would be 52, 25 an hour on field number four during the day for a high school team, for instance. So depending on the number of hours.
Okay, so, okay.
Yeah, two hours is a little over $100, so however long you're reserving out.
So the infamous 27 changes, their fees were based on a lot of hours also?
That permit was approximately $10,000.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to approve this or to pass this resolution?
I'll move 5A1.
Second?
Excuse me, that would be 6A1.
6A1.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I still need the glasses. 6A1.
Doesn't have his glasses on? Okay, I still need a second.
I'll second it, knowing that staff time is valuable, so.
All right. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Scarpetian?
Yes.
Khan?
Yes.
Rothfogel?
Yes.
Sharkey?
Yes.
President Sharkey?
I'm sorry. President Patrick, Tom.
That's okay. Yes.
And I'm reading it, too.
Thank you.
Next is item 6B, reports for information only at 1, customer service office and filming annual report.
Good afternoon, President Patrick, members of the Commission and staff. My name is Malin Pat. I'm a customer service representative at the customer service office, and I oversee the day-to-day operations of the customer service office, and I'm here to showcase the community buildings and picnic facilities that we reserve. Okay, we have community buildings and picnic facilities, and we provide picnic sites and community buildings, wedding sites, and wedding photo sites. Okay, our picnic sites, we have seven outdoor picnic facilities, and two of them are historical landmarks, and they are available for reservations from Monday to Sunday, and fees vary anywhere between $35 to $40 an hour, depending on the location. We have Lower Shoal Canyon Park, one of our outside facilities. It has three picnic pavilions, and each pavilion seats about 80 people. We also have Palmer Park, which has two picnic pavilions, each one seating about 50 people. The next one. We also have Verdugo Park, which has five picnic areas, and each section seats about 100 people. Starting February 1, we'll be also renting out Seritas Park. It used to be a first-come, first-served park, but starting February 1. It used to be a first-come, first-served park, but starting February 1st, we'll be renting this out. We also have Pacific Park Picnic Shelter that has two pavilions, each one seating about 50 people. Casa Adobe de San Rafael is one of our historical landmarks. There's only one picnic area that sits about 100 people. Verdugo Adobe is a small park in a residential area. It sits about anywhere between 25 to 40 people, and it's also one of our historical landmarks. Just to mention, right now we have bathroom issues in that park, so we mostly reserve it for photo sessions. But I think there are plans to do something about the restroom situation. Right now, we have three community buildings that are available, and the amenities include a warming oven, a sink, a refrigerator, and, go back to that, sorry. Okay, and a fridge. And then tables and chairs are also included when we rent out these community buildings. Okay, we're done with that. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Okay. So we're done with Casa Adobe. So Verdugo Adobe, we mentioned that, and then we will proceed to the community buildings. Okay, as I said, there are three buildings available, and these are the amenities that are offered. Fees are again anywhere between $35 to $50 an hour plus a $200 conditionally refundable deposit, and they pay everything upfront when they make the reservations. This is the Dunsmore Community Building. It has a large room that sits about 50 people. A smaller room sits about 20 people. These buildings are also being used for classes, by the way. We also have the Griffith Manor in Flower Street. This just opened last year, a newly renovated building, and it sits about 50 people. We have the Joe Bridges Clubhouse in Glen Oaks Park. This is our most popular community building. We have it booked almost every weekend. It sits about 100 people. Again, we have the amenities included. We have additional facilities aside from the previous buildings that were mentioned. We have Pacific Community Center, Adult Recreation Center, Maple Park Community Center, and Spar Heights Community Center. And they're administered directly by the community center staff, so we don't reserve them from the community, from the customer service office. Okay, so there are also three wedding photo sites, Casa Adobe de San Rafael, Verdugo Adobe. Okay, here are the sites. Okay, the fees are $80 for two hours at Casa Adobe and Verdugo Adobe, and at the Brand Friendship Garden, it's $235 for two hours, and this is just for a photo session. Okay, for reservation information, we are open Monday to Friday, starting at 8:30 in the morning, and this is the number to call, 548-2752. Okay, do you have any questions?
What a wonderful group of facilities.
Oh. Commissioner Khan.
As part of your staff report, there were recommendations?
Well, I think one recommendation has already been approved, and that is to be able to rent out Saritas Park, because it used to be a first-come, first-served park.
Okay. Did you want to talk about the other? You had two others.
I'm not aware of any.
You can go back to the.
President Patrick, members of the Commission, the second one is Duque Majin Wilderness Park. We're working with Mark Sturdivan under the Open Trails Program to hire a site host. So we're in the end stages of hiring a site host. So once when the site host is hired, then we're going to start reserving Duque Majin, Duque Majin Park. And we're also working with our media team to improve our websites and our facility reservation website. And like I mentioned in past meetings, we're posting things on Facebook and Twitter and our newsletter about our facility rentals and what facilities we have available for the public to rent out.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rothfogel.
Just so that we all know that what we're, that the Brand Friendship Garden, that is also the Japanese teahouse, correct?
Yes. It's called by many different names, gazebo, Victorian gazebo, friendship garden, Japanese garden, but they all refer to the same area.
Dr. Ann, did you have something?
Yes, President Patrick, Commissioners, I just wanted to clarify, at Duque Majin, a site host is comparable to a caretaker. Once we have the site host slash caretaker on board, we will be able to be more active in reserving Duque Majin, and we do get a lot of requests. And we are interviewing applicants as we speak for that position. So we're very hopeful that within a month, we'll have a site host slash caretaker at Duque Majin.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time and your report. Okay, what is next?
Next, we have item 6B2, monthly activity reports at A, park planning and development.
President Patrick, members of the Commission, you may recall that in December, we went out to bid on three exciting projects. Jess indicated that in the first part of February, we're going to City Council, sadly to reject two of those bids because they came in higher than our anticipated estimates. The good news is that the museum project is moving forward, but we will be rebidding the Maryland Avenue Park project, as well as the Catalina Verdugo Restaurant project. We're doing some minor value engineering and looking at the scope of work and then rebidding the project out. On the upside, Sean Begumian in a moment will be presenting to you two projects that we just completed under budget and under schedule, and I don't want to steal his thunder, but I just wanted to give you a heads up that in towards the late part of February, we will also be presenting to you the, well, actually in February, Commission Report will be presenting to you the Design for Maple Park Improvement Project. So that's exciting, and then soon after, we'll be presenting that to the City Council. So stay tuned, and hopefully by then, we'll have an update to you on those two projects that will be rebid out as well. Thank you. If Sean can join us with the.
I have a question.
Yes.
On Maple Park Improvement Project, I know there's actually two, three groups of people that use that park every day. Do we contact them? Are they part of, maybe make suggestions, get suggestions from them? Do we have a community meeting with them or?
Commissioner Karpetye, that's an excellent question, and thanks for reminding me. We have done extensive outreach. Our project manager, who you met before, is Ms. Adrin Agolazarian. She's sort of become part of that neighborhood, because she also finished the improvements of the community center building about a year and a half ago. She has a very good understanding of the community and the park patrons. She knows many of them by first name. We also outreach to the area schools, met some of the parents, met with the principals. We had some ad hoc meetings with some of the younger patrons, the teenagers who frequent the park, to get an understanding of some of their needs. So the park design that we'll be presenting to you is hopefully addressing many of our patronage that use the park.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yes.
This is my turn, huh?
Yes, your turn, Sean.
Even though your thunder has been stalled.
No, no, you don't know what the project is.
Okay, good afternoon, President Patrick, Commissioners. My name is Sean Begumian, and I'm here to update you regarding completion of car and brand park security projects. As Emily said, both of these projects were completed on time and on budget. I will start with Car Park first. Car Park, we started this project on September 17 of 2012 and was completed on January 15 of, a couple of weeks ago, 13. The scope of work was installation of the fence and the gates at the north and the south entries, tree trimming, light improvements, replacement of picnic tables, construction of the monument sign, trash enclosure, and a minor landscape. Well, this is now our park. This is from Colorado Street. This is the main entry. That's the, you know, as you can see, the fence, the gate, and the monument sign. This is a close-up of our fence. This is again, it's on the Colorado side. This is again, the gate with the pilercider columns on the Colorado side. This is the gate and the fence on the north side with the trash enclosure on that far end. This is the same picture from inside the park, where you can see the trash enclosure. We put that new structure there for the trash enclosure and the gate. And this is our monument sign that if you drive by from Colorado, you can see Cita Glendale when you're traveling on the westbound, I mean eastbound, and it's Car Park on the That's our energy-efficient light fixtures with new poles throughout the park. There are ADD, energy-efficient lighting. This shows we replaced all the guardrails and the picnic tables and, you know, the picnic concrete pads. A close-up view of the guardrails again, that was replaced. And that was Car Park. Brand Park, we started the Brand Park on September 24th and was completed on January 8th. The scope of work on Brand Park was to install new sewing gates at the east and west entrances to the park, restoration of existing rough island gates, restoration of existing concrete columns at both entries, and a minor landscape. This was the previous condition that we had with no gates. As you can see, the existing entry. But I did my best, but I couldn't, I mean, you can see the gates, they're right there. They've been installed. I'll give you a closer picture in a few minutes. This is the existing gates that have been refurbished, repaired, painted. This is a close-up. This is, the picture on the right is the entry, and to the left was the exit driveway. And we also secured the alley between the neighbors and the park with the gate and the And this is our west entrance with no gate, and this is the west entrance with the gate. And that's about it. I can answer you any questions that you may have.
Questions?
I don't have a question, but I did drive, well, actually, I do have a question. I drove by car, car. It looks really nice, really great. How are we doing with skateboarding? I know we had a problem.
With skateboarding? We've done some skate-proofing items. We added to the concrete. We hoping, you know.
Yeah.
But again, I was there this morning with Coco. We can see the signs between those stoppers, they're skating, so.
They're still there, but it looks great. It really does.
Thank you.
Yes.
I don't know if you will have the answer, or maybe the staff can answer that. The gates at Brand Park, what time do they close? Are they closed manually or are they on a timer? Do they have a, are they motorized, or how does that work?
President Patrick, members of the Commission, President Skarpetian, the time to close the Brand Park gates is 10 o'clock at night, and so we have one of our in-house living caretaker and/or our night closer will go by and close the gates at 10. Now, we're not always exactly at a location at 10. Sometimes they can drag, because you have a number of facilities to close, to lock the gates at. But 10 o'clock is the time that we anticipate park gates being closed.
Okay, thank you.
They look very nice.
Yeah, they do.
It's really nice to have attractive gates at both places. Great job.
And I've seen the ones at Brand, driving up to, you know, friends' house that live near there, and it's absolutely beautiful. Rumor had it that you were under budget. Can you expand on that?
Under budget?
For your projects? I thought that's what I was.
Not much, but we managed to, you know, to complete.
On budget is good, too.
On budget.
That's good, too.
Two weeks, I can tell you exactly how much under the budget, but I know we didn't exceed the budget.
That's good.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice to have an update on that and have it finished. Great, thank you. And what is next?
Item 6B2B, park services.
President Patrick, members of the Commission, I'm sitting over here. As given last month's recommendation by Commission, we have now presented the report to you with the list with the parks in mind. So we have it authorized by a park, and Commissioner Rothfogel requested to highlight some of the work orders that we think were kind of out of the ordinary, something out of the norm that we would do. We have a brief presentation of pictures of some of the cleanup work that we've done. But one thing I want to highlight, which I don't have pictures of, and this is something I'm working with staff to do a better job of capturing the work, so we can show our public and Commission what we do before, during, and after a project that we're doing. One of them worthwhile mentioning is on open space at Site A. We had a film permit request that I worked with our folks in Recreation and Permit Services. Hyundai wanted to use Site A to do a commercial for an SUV, and the commercial will be aired right before the Super Bowl game kickoff. So we're really excited about that. Our staff helped in prepping the site and getting the site back to its normal shape. I'm looking forward to seeing how we play it out. Unfortunately, we don't have pictures of the prep work of the staff. There was a check made out to our section as well as the permit services, so it was an opportunity for revenue and, you know, good morale for our staff to see their work being highlighted right before the Super Bowl. So look forward to Hyundai commercial during the Super Bowl.
During, or right before?
It should be before, I believe. They said before the Super Bowl kickoff, and I don't know exactly when, but that's the timeline they have.
Still a lot of viewers.
A lot of viewers.
I'm sure that will be the high point.
For me, it will be the high point of the.
For me, too.
I respect that. We, again, are struggling with some pictures, and we will have better pictures for you for the future. Some of the work we have pictures of, complete at work, not pre. Thank you, Iris, so much. Next, I'll go there. First thing I want to show is some of the cleanup work our staff did at Dunsmore Park. The red highlighted area just south of the ball fields, it is a long driveway that pretty much leads to nowhere, but it does have a lot of leaves and ivy that overgrows the driveway. It's mostly used by staff to access the rest of the facility from down south to do some cleanup and debris removal. The amount of work we had required, again, our tractor to be used, and as you see, the big dump, that those two are in the wrong locations, these, the big dump to use, a couple of loads to be taken out of here. At the same time, at Dunsmore Park, our staff had, along with the folks at our Public Works Facilities Maintenance, constructed bins over at Dunsmore Park. The bins are for storage, and we, in conjunction with them, were to clean up some of the debris that was left over from the construction. We do partner a lot with our Public Works Facility staff, and we have a very good working relationship. We're proud of the work they do for us. This is what that roadway looks after the cleanup. Next time, we'll show you what it looks before, so you can see the amount of work that's there. Duque Majin Park, this is the DG parking lot. We're working very closely with Mark Sturdivan and his work crew that he has up there over the weekends. They have been quite of a good help for us in helping mulch trees and do a lot of maintenance work on the trails. What we had is, we've used this area for us to get some mulch, as more of a mulch storage that we use for our sites. And this is exactly the area and location that you see in the, on the picture, where the future host is going to be parking their trailer. So we work with Mark and taking those piles and using some of that at the facility, as well as other facilities, but the main concept was to move it to the opposite side, where it's not going to be interfering with the parking area for the caretaker or the host. And staff also had to work in cleaning the area and making it available. The drains were there, the power and the water for the trailer also there for the hookups. And again, with our Facilities Maintenance staff, Public Works, we had everything ready for them. So the site is ready for the caretaker host as soon as that, you know, contract is signed and he is selected, he or she is selected. Open space, this is a call we got from one of our residents as they were hiking. We do get this a lot, but want to highlight it for Commission and the public. Our open space is not a location for people to come and dump, but you'd be surprised how much of it we actually experience. This is off of the San Rafael roadway, north of the two freeway, as it leads towards the Emerald Isles. This is a closer picture. There is a driveway there that really doesn't lead to anything. This is the location that at one point was considered for, you know, potential dog park. So it is open space. It has trails that oversee the sports complex on the other end. But here is what the resident found, and he took the pictures and sent it to us. Turns out, somebody was doing some construction, it looks like carpeting and changing of tiles, and this is the area they decided to save a little money and dump. And as soon as we received a note from the resident, of course, we scheduled this and went out there. Here is what we found. This is the main entry gate leading to that space. What it seems like it has happened is someone must have reamed off the road and broken the gate, and so the access to the site was pretty much open. The gating was open, and it wasn't secured. Well, once the guys, staff went in there and removed that shrub bed, we also noticed that somebody was dumping their brush, a lot of trees that were just from, wherever they came from, we don't know. And as you can see. And as you can see, it took two, actually, three truckloads to be able to remove everything from the site. And again, construction debris, and as we exited, we decided the best thing to do for this location is remove the broken poles and have the actual gate locked again. So we have changed the lock, we've chained it, we've locked it. Right now, people will not have access except for, again, authorized representatives of parks in the city. And that pretty much concludes this presentation.
Okay, are there any questions?
Just a comment, I actually like the layout better now, too.
Great, thank you.
It's easier to track and see where the work orders are in which park.
Great, well, we'll continue with that and take your considerations for future ones. If you have any recommendations, we're happy to. Justin?
Great.
Yes, I also really like this, this format, it made it very easy for me to see what's, what you've been doing over the past month, so. And I really like seeing the before and after pictures, and that's horrible, all that stuff that was, that was dumped there, because it really does make an impact on people that are hiking and trying to enjoy the open space.
Absolutely, and, and we want to make the, their visits, our residents' visits to our parks and open space very enjoyable, and this really does hamper that enjoyment. One thing I did not highlight, I know you have it in front of you, but for the residents watching, we had completed 113 work orders in the month of December, of which 103 were gardeners, six were pesticide applications, and about four of them were for irrigation repairs.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes.
I have a question for the kids. Has anybody been to Duke Magian Wilderness Park? Have you? Okay. All right, good. You know, it's 700 acres, so I wanted to see if you missed it or not. So, well, good, we've got some.
Okay, I think we're going to hear from them in just a couple more minutes.
Okay.
All right, what is next?
Next, we have item 6B2C, Recreation and Community Services.
I'll be quick, so the kids can get up here any minute.
Okay.
Be presented. Members of the, President Patrick, members of the commission, inside your packets, you have the activity report for Recreation and Community Services. The report includes the community center drop-in programming for last year, last calendar year, January 1 through December 31st of 2012. We had a total of 177,683 drop-in participants use our facilities at our four community centers. Broken down, Maple Park had 37,905, Pacific Community Center had 40,823, ARC had 83,095, and Spar Heights had 15,860 drop-in participants. Drop-in activities include our basketball, volleyball, badminton, our open play, our recreation rooms, which include pool, billiards, foosball, table tennis. We have our exercise gym at the Adult Recreation Center and our, of course, our senior exercise classes. For our viewers, if you're interested in any of our drop-in programming, you can come to any of our community centers and purchase an activity card. Activity cards are $10 for seniors ages 16 and up. Adult activity cards, $25 between the ages of 18 to 59, and for youth under 18, you guys, it's free. Activity cards are good for one, one year at time of purchase. So basically, it's, you know, really good program, you know, come on by, we have multiple, you know, facilities, our four facilities, and a lot of good activities for the community. Civic Auditorium, for December of 2012, we had 10 revenue-producing events totaling Civic Auditorium staff delivered to three department activities, Glendale Narrows Riverwalk, Homeless Connect Event, and the Rose Floor Reception. And last but not least, our Customer Service Office, revenue totaled $31,754. In the report, I also included the revenue for community centers. So every month, I'll be reporting Customer Service Office revenue and the community center revenue. So total revenue for the four community centers and our Customer Service Community Buildings were $31,754. Any questions? I told you to be short and sweet.
Any questions? Yes.
Yes.
Maybe this is off topic, but you were doing some research on indoor soccer in Civic Auditorium, where, where do we stand, what's the status on that?
I'm working on a council report, and we should go to council within the next couple. My goal is end of February, beginning of March. I'm working with a few vendors, trying to get estimates, and we're conducting a benchmark survey statewide, Northern California all the way up to Southern California, and we're contacting different indoor soccer facilities.
Thanks.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And what is next?
Next is item 6B2D, Human Services.
Good afternoon, President Patrick, members of the commission and staff. My name is RCNA Asine, and I'm a Homeless Programs Coordinator with the Community Services and Parks Department Human Services Section. I'm here today to provide a brief presentation on the 2012 Homeless and Senior Connect Day event that took place on December 13th of 2012. Can we move to the next slide? The purpose of our Connect Day event is to bring out our community service providers to one central location and provide extensive outreach, emergency services, housing services, public benefits, and other types of life-enriching services to our homeless and senior population. With the commitment of over 27 social service providers, we were able to reach out to 84 homeless and senior participants. I'm sorry, there you go.
Do you want to use the clicker?
Oh, yes. Is this it?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, do I just press the button? Yes. Side. Okay, thank you. So these are some of our service providers that were able to attend the event. I won't go through all of them, but we have Ascencia, Door of Hope, Salvation Army, Didi Hirsch, as you can see, Verdigo Job Center. So they were very committed, very dedicated to helping our homeless and senior population out on the day of, and it was a very, very successful event because of them. Whoops, I don't think that's working. It's a side of that. This one? Sorry.
Sorry.
Ah, okay, thank you. Of the 84 participants that we served on, on the day of the event, 42 were homeless, 18 were homeless and senior, 14 were seniors, and 10 were unknown, unfortunately, they did not complete their applications. The services that were received by our participants included housing, medical tests, mental health services, and we have the numbers as well, next to the types of services that were received. Eight received employment, 11 received government benefits, and the list is there, the rest of the services are also listed. Okay. Arrow. Trying to address to this, I'm sorry. We really wanted to take this time to recognize our event sponsors, our event supporters. Of course, the Community Services Parks Department and collaboration with Ascencia sponsored this event. We also had our supporters, Tres Hermanas Takaria, Masters Contracting Corporation, Porto's Bakery, Glendale Kiwanis Club, Rotary Club, and individual donations. If it wasn't for our supporters, we really would not have been able to put this event together, and it wouldn't have been as successful as it was. So we really want to recognize them in front of the commission. And one other thing I wanted to point out was Tres Hermanas Takaria, Mr. Nubar Darbedrosyan is the owner, he managed to put together a group of 20 youth volunteers from the Armenian Sisters Academy. They all came out with their chef hats on, ready to go, and they served lunch for two hours to our homeless and senior clients. They also helped out with our clothing donation section, we had so much clothing that was donated by individual donors, shoes, blankets, scarves, books, and toys for children. So these children were there for two hours, nonstop, serving lunch and helping out our homeless and our, and our seniors on the day of the event. I wanted to invite up the group real quickly to recognize them, and we have Ms. Talar and Krista. They're going to be just talking briefly about their experience on the day of the event. But before I do that, I wanted to ask the commission, President Patrick, members of the commission, if you guys had any questions?
I just have a, a brief question. One of the, the numbers I noticed was that even though we served 84 individual participants, that we only gave out like 17 hygiene kits. I, I think that's something that we should, is it because we ran out, or is it because they didn't want them?
That's actually a great question. I actually tried to condense everything into this meeting, into this five-minute presentation. We actually had over 100 hygiene kits. Unfortunately, when the, when the clients come in through the doors, we have them fill out forms, and as they're going around the armory, the, the location was the Glendale Armory, as they're going around receiving their services, we ask them to complete their forms. That way, at the end of the event or as they're leaving, we're able to tally up and see how many hygiene kits were passed out, how many, you know, CalFresh applications were completed or social security benefit applications were completed. Majority of our clients, unfortunately, don't return those forms back. So these were just the clients that we were able to account for. We had their forms and we were able to tell how many received. I can assure you that we had a total of six tables or seven tables that were set up, all full of hygiene kits and clothing donations, shoes, blankets, and there's barely anything left at the end of the event. But unfortunately, we couldn't account for all of the, the hygiene kits.
But you were able to account for the number of people that walked through the door, so that 84 is a, is a solid number?
The 84 is a solid number. Of course, there may be some that were not accounted for, they probably left before we could get to them. It is a very big space, the armory, and so as clients walk in, we try to get to as many of the clients as possible. But yes, 84 is a solid number.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. This year was 84, as you mentioned.
Yes.
What was last year's participants?
We did not have a Connect Day last year, but the year before, this is actually our fourth annual Connect Day. In fact, this year, we integrated the senior population in our event. Historically, we have always held the event for our homeless population. But this year, with the collaboration of our team at the Adult Recreation Center, we were able to incorporate the senior population. The number was around the same, I believe it was 82 years ago. So it's pretty consistent in terms of the numbers.
Thanks.
Okay, we get to meet the kids now.
Yes, the fun part.
Yeah.
Guys can all line up, and then Talar and Krista, do you want to give a brief presentation?
Good afternoon, my name is Krista Kirchan, I'm the president of the school. Throughout life, people go through many hardships that lead them to the worst of scenarios, and whenever we were, we helped them, it brought us such joy because we got happy to see, like, them satisfied and happy, and whenever we see them happy, we're happy too. And we want to help them and reach out for our community, we would like to do it again. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Talar Darbedrosyan, I am the vice president of Armenian Sisters Academy. People go through tough times and get into bad situations through life, and we were lucky enough to help those people. My friends and I had the opportunity to feed those in need. We don't know how they got there or what their story is, but we know they need help and we're always willing to help them. Thank you.
Thank you all, you've, you've done a remarkable job, and I know it was very, very much appreciated, and certainly it's appreciated by the commission, and I'm probably not the only one that wants to thank you. So I'm going to start with Mr. Duran down there.
President Patrick, I was just going to suggest that, that they give self-introductions very quickly.
That'd be nice.
That would be fabulous. Yeah.
Hi, my name is Sean Papyrian, and I've been attending this school for about 11 years. So whenever I went to the homeless, we've always done like community service for underprivileged kids, underprivileged children. So the day that I went to the homeless center, it was really, you know, touched my heart because there were people there where, they came in with sandals, freezing outside, they had nothing to wear, and I was glad that I could, like, maybe fold the clothes and then do, let's say they wanted this type of clothing, I could get it for them. And then, like, their needs, we could satisfy their needs, they weren't on, like, they weren't at a point where they were desperate for help. We gave them the help, and then they could walk out happy that they had food today, they got the clothing that they needed for the rest of the day, and they also got maybe the hygiene kits or the medical things that they had, that they needed to get, maybe dentistry. So that really touched my heart.
Hi, my name is Dari Ta Pasmakyan, and I've been attending Armenian Sisters Academy for 11 years. I was really glad, I'm, I'm proud to say that I helped the needy. I had fun doing it.
Hello, my name is Har Tomkochan, I've been attending Armenian Sisters Academy since kindergarten. When I went to the homeless and I saw them that way, it was, it was sad, but when we gave them the stuff they needed, it was touching, so, yeah, thank you.
Hi, my name is Hara Kamboyan, I've been attending this school for 11 years. Whenever we went to the homeless shelter, most of the homelesses, they wanted a lot of food, and we gave them, like, three rounds of food, so they, and they needed it a lot. And we also gave them a lot of clothes.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lauren Momjin, I've been attending Armenian Sisters Academy since kindergarten, and I'm very proud to say that we helped the homeless people.
Hi, my name is Raka Lugasyan, and I've been attending Armenian Sisters Academy for about 11 years now, and we've always done things to help people, but especially the people that need it the most, it's really proud to say that our school can help the people like that, and us being fortunate enough to go to a school with such a great environment, I'm glad that we were able to help the people that are not as fortunate as us.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sean Talkasbada, and I've been attending Armenian Sisters Academy since 4th grade, and it was an opportunity for me to help the homeless, and I'm really glad that I helped them.
My name is Nono Rosadurian, and this is my second year in ASA. This is the first time I've done community service, and I honestly had fun, and it was, like, enjoyable to help people who, like, needed it the most.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maya Mulekin, and this is my 11th year at Armenian Sisters Academy, and when we went there, I first, I was kind of nervous, but when I saw them all happy and they know that we are helping them out of the, out of our hearts, they really appreciated, and I appreciated their, their smiles and.
Hi, my name is Talar Galusian, I've been attending Armenian Sisters Academy for 10 years, and it made me really happy to see the joy this food bought into people's faces. Some of them hadn't eaten for weeks, and they were very happy.
Hi, I'm Alin Kadoyan, and I've been attending ASA for eight years, and helping the homeless was new and different, and at the same time, it was fun, so it was helpful and it made me happy, too.
Great.
Hi, my name is Tina Ladchinyan, I've been attending Armenian Sisters Academy for about eight years, and it was a really amazing experience for me to help the people in need because it made me happy that they were happy to eat.
Thank you.
My name is Lori Simoneon, and I've been attending this school for 10 years, and it was a really good experience seeing the smiles on their faces when they left the doors, and it was fun, too.
Thank you.
You, you are a fabulous group of kids, and I, I just can't tell you how appreciative we all are of what you do for the community and what you do for yourselves in, in terms of learning what it's like to give back to the community and give back to people that don't have as much as you do. And I'm, I'm glad to hear that you all had a good time, as well as were doing good while you were there. So I just can't thank you enough for participating in this and, and helping really make the, the day a good success. So thank you so much. [applause] Yes.
President Patrick? I just remembered something that I believe it touched many of my fellow classmates' hearts, too. When, when we were there, we were serving food, we saw a fellow Armenian on the streets, I believe his name was Khosrov, where he was...
in a really bad, like, position. He was like desperate for food. So we were not only happy to help fellow Americans in the time of need, but to also realize that people from our race, the Armenians, were in that kind of situation. It made us happy because we were giving back to the society, and not only giving back to the society, we were helping other peoples of our race, so that, no.
Unfortunately, homelessness does not choose by race or nationality. It chooses by people that are down on their luck, and that's from all groups of people. So the fact that you guys were out there helping Armenians and everybody that needed help that day is just fabulous, and I, again, I just really can't thank you enough for all the work that you did. Thank you very, very much. You're an amazing group.
We're so proud of all of you. In this age, you do the community work, the volunteer work, and you give back to your community. That's an awesome thing. I think you're a great role model for all the students, all the kids out there. Keep on doing the good deed. Great job.
Proud to have you. Okay, and I guess that brings us to the end. I'd just like to remind people that in February, we also have a special meeting because our regular Monday meeting is a holiday. So we will be meeting on Thursday, February 14th, and it will still be at 2:30. It will still be here. Oh, I'm sorry.
It'll still be Valentine's Day?
And it will still be Valentine's Day.
Do we need a, do we need a card?
Councilmember Weaver did not fill out a card.
Oh, well.
We'll fill out one. To like you to know, some of these students, how many of you worked on the Rose Floor?
Oh, wow.
Now, they're all what, eighth, ninth, 10th?
Eighth.
Eighth. I've got them for four more years.
You did a beautiful job. I hope you heard that. You can't escape.
I just want you to know, they did a great job over there.
And winners, too. A governor's trophy.
We had over 1,000 students working on the float, over 41 schools represented. So it's kids like this, they did a bang-up job. It's so, so much fun to work when you've got people like this to help you. I'll make sure you all get city pins, okay?
Great. And Councilman Weaver is the- Thank you, Councilman Weaver. Councilman Weaver is the crew chief and does a beautiful job on the float. Okay, did I miss anything else? All right, then we are adjourned.